Call this meeting order, please rise for the flag salute.
And the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of board meeting minutes for September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five and September twenty sixth, twenty twenty.
Comment for the approval of board meeting minutes for September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five and September twenty sixth.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the board meeting minutes for September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five and September twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
We would like to make the recommendation you add under item ten, new business, section P, approval resolution five, twenty five, twenty six, RCO. We would seek a motion from the board to add the agenda.
I'll move to add item ten B, approval of resolution five dash twenty five, twenty six, RCO grant agreement to tonight's agenda. One second.
It's been moved and seconded to add to the agenda. Under ten. B, approval of resolution. Five dash two, five, two, six, RCO grant. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the? Agenda as. As modified.
I'll make a motion to approve because the agenda as, or the meeting minute agenda as mod.
Yes, absolutely.
I'll second one of those.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Consent agenda.
I'm in for the approval of the consent agenda. One second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Booster fundraiser approvals, approval of class of twenty twenty nine boosters raffles.
I make a. Okay, so um, we have put in for two raffles, you guys needed to give more information apparently. So one of the raffles we're hoping to do is raffle off half a cow or a pig, we have the pigs secured. From a local farm. Um, probably in spring we would be doing that and then the other one was a basket raffle where a family. Wants to donate like a Yeti cooler and then we just transfer donations to fill it like picnic style type things.
Um, for the approval of the booster, I thought it's twenty nine, booster raffles. Make a. A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the class of twenty twenty nine booster raffles. Is there any discussion?
I think our question honestly was just that the number of raffles, I think it just said. Raffles and it's just, so we, I think we're just following back and making sure that you basically, there was a limit to how many you could do. So those two will be fine.
I don't know the exact gambling rules, so I check on that. Pretty sure it's two, that's what I was getting ready to say, but. But I would, yeah, that, and that's what the concern was, just to make sure that it wasn't need to.
Yeah.
So.
Perfect, but those sound like them anyways, but thank you.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? Uh, seeing, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. You guys do not have to stick around if you don't want to too, so, okay, awesome, I'm just letting you know if you didn't want to, you know, go to. Alright, next, approval of class of twenty thirty booster fundraisers.
I'm, I'll make a motion that we approve the class of twenty, uh, twenty thirty booster fundraiser.
It's been moved and seconded, approve the class of twenty thirty booster fundraisers. Is there any? Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
You're muted.
Okay, I'm at a football game, so. So yeah, just the Reese, we're gonna do those instead of the. The Valentine's Day grams and there might have been a competition with the FFA, so we're doing the Reese because of two thousand twenty six decided not to do them. And I missed having one last year, so.
Awesome. Alright.
I'm also the representative for. The wrestling club too.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Alright, approval of class of twenty thirty one booster fundraisers. Twenty thirty one, thirty one. I know, I guess.
Yeah, we're on you.
That's you, that's you, Cindy, we're on you. They just keep climbing in numbers.
I'll move for the approval of the class of twenty thirty one booster fundraiser. I'll make a, uh, I second cheese, why are you trying to do that?
It's been moved and seconded, approve the class of twenty thirty one booster fundraisers, is there any discussion?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cindy.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Alright, approval of Elmer Wrestling Club fundraiser.
Back. Alright, so on the list, you can go ahead and take off the Phil R Matt, uh, donation drive, we're not gonna do that. Um, so it's just our standards, we'll do, you know, some fifty fifty raffles at some of our duels. Uh, our major one is like we've done for years in the past is our folk style youth tournament that's on December twenty eighth. That's a Sunday. Um, and then we'll do concessions both at middle school and our home, home duels. And then our other, other thing that we're going to do is a trip raffle and we're actually going to do that with the middle school. And high school, just because Elmer Wrestling Club supports both. Both of those, it's not just a high school thing and that's gonna be, we actually have two spring break trips, one to Leavenworth and one to Yellowstone to raffle off.
Um, are we, are you allowed to do the two fifty fifty raffles and a trip raffle?
Yes, you are, uh, it's just you're, you're allowed to do two fifty fifty raffles. And if we can't, and, and I can double check, I'll check with Lisa Jo- uh, Johnson, cause she's on the gambling commission. And if for some reason that, that is a no-no, we will just do one fifty fifty.
Okay.
I don't wanna get in trouble.
We don't want you to be there.
Yeah.
I'll move for the approval of the Elmer Wrestling Club fundraiser. A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Elmer Wrestling Club fundraisers. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Alright. Yeah, thank you, see you later, have fun at football. Uh, discussion items twenty five, twenty six board goals.
I think. We captured what was discussed at one of the trees.
Sorry, I wasn't able to be there, I had an angioclasty on my eyeball. I know, it sounds weird, but. On my tear.
I think, um, we're just looking for direction feedback.
What were your thoughts, Bernadette, since you were? Now, is there anything that you wanted to add, that I mean, since, um, you weren't able to attend anything that, uh, you're. Wanting as a goal or reinforce?
I feel like most of the things were captured, um, I think when I also said over like our standards and we're not enough talking about that, but. Also, we try to align those, um, some of them kind of overlap, so I feel like we have a good set of goals that we can. Feel confident to go through, um, I am happy to see that we're gonna do the policy reviews, even though it's gonna be a lot for the one thousands, but. Um, I know we talked about that before, so.
I think just staying on those, something that came up is just staying on our review cycle, not getting off the review cycle and reviewing our policies. So like this year. We're up on the one thousands. Um, there was a note, because we did have that conversation with Mary, it's like really superintendent evaluation be tied to that strategic plan. But I do feel, and I've had this conversation with Michael, uh, we really aren't a great spot of being aspirational for what we want our students. Uh, but it's, I feel like if the goal is to get it built and then tie it back, it's hard to. Evaluate off something that's in process. We're building it.
Okay.
Um, I did get a couple of names, I feel like if that is the direction we'd like to go. I think my recommendation would be to have it, you know, work with a third party to also have any kind of support that design. Having input from some of these certain third party groups, what that would look like.
Yeah, I think it's a, a good place, uh, going out to, um. Like community for the community, um, engagement all around, just to kind of get a pulse on where we're at and where we need to go. Um, with all the things that we have accomplished over the last few years, uh, with the, the new strategic plan. Um, and then addressing some of our facility needs. For sure, we have a lot of facility needs, which.
Maybe as we made later.
They'll leave, yes.
Agenda is gonna be a busy year.
Um, I did compile, did go through an exercise with, uh, everybody else compiling some of the standards, I'll share that with you, you see how you feel like the. Aligns with the, the goal, since it is a collaborative, um, I have that here for you tonight too, so. Um, hopefully that will be helpful with, uh, aligning with, uh, the goals unless anybody has anything else to add to the goals. Perhaps.
Honestly, I think my. Only piece, and maybe it's caught in here, but I. Still feel like we are, um, kind of habitually wanting to do better. Uh, by the. Superintendent Evaluation Process.
I agree.
And I don't, for me, I feel like that's a goal in and of itself. Um, that we continuously talk about as a board, like. We wanna do better by, um. By the process, not specific to.
Absolutely.
Chris's is all, but.
No, just, just, just in general, because it's been kind of ever since, well, I mean, I'm.
No, it's been from the start, I feel like we've kind of been.
I was talking to, yeah.
Create something that.
Talking to Chris about that today, it's like, I have no idea what steps to go through to do this, it's a very. Fast learning curve and trying to put this together, it'd be nice to have. A complete step through, so whoever takes over this someday can just pick it up and be like, this is what I am supposed to do.
Well, and I think especially since we've had lots of conversations that. That is one of our most. It's really, it's the biggest part of, yeah, what our role really is, that, you know, budget, so.
I think it does roll up into this one too, but. It would be helpful to probably draw it out as a little bit of a. You know. How we're doing to evaluate ourselves as far as how it's tied into the strategic.
I can, again, I have. I was thinking. And maybe I'm taking this literal, but I, I think that this age represents. What we as a board, the goal that we have for our board. Not what goals we have necessarily. For the district or for, for saying, I mean, I would think there would be some alignment, that, you know, yeah, they should have some correlation for sure, but this is like. Our own list of things that we're seeking to get. Worked through and that, and then we'd have a strategic plan that would have some. Pieces to it as well, and then we have this evaluation and there, there would be. An overlap, but they would still have some very unique aspects to them.
Yeah, I would agree, I, I, I hate to say it this way, I always feel a little shameful, I'm like, we're not, we, we wanted to be very. Well versed in the operation of how it worked with the evaluation and I feel like we tried to do stuff, but it was never. A forward or upward, it was always kind of sideways and sideways and be back a little, so I definitely feel like we could do a lot better.
So that, that would be my only recommendation as a board that we consider adding that as a separate. Accountable goal.
Anything else, like I said, I got that supporting, so you can take a look at. I put everybody's together, we, we only hit actually on one. To, to be quite honest, it's all over the place.
Okay.
Between all four of us, like. Like where we land on what we thought were different, you know, areas or standards, cause I, I did this exercise. To see. Where we thought our standards would land with our goals and everything, just to see kind of where everybody was at and see if we were missing a goal. And I couldn't come to any conclusion because there was only one thing that we looked at.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We'll see.
But that's okay, but that's okay, because that'll help us build. Build forward and that also gives us that. It gives us the depth of what our board is collectively, we need to accomplish. Well, in a conversation of us coming back together to the board and go, okay. But this, you picked this one, but it still captures what I was thinking about with this one, so I think there could still be more overlap, but.
Yeah, and that was my comment to Michael was, I still feel like that there's some overlap.
Yeah.
And, and there's some redundancy in some of these, and so I think there's a little bit more blown down and digesting.
Every time I read one, I'm like, well, doesn't that apply to standard one, two, three, four, like.
And I feel like we grapple with that every time we get to it, right?
I, I think the big thing is, is when we do this with our teacher and our teacher evaluations. Is, it's an eighty-four point teacher evaluation process. So to go through all eighty-four points, we like to come in, when I do our principal evaluations, I begin off with, what is the problem of practice we're working on? And then we'll figure out how to connect things back together. Based on what it is we're trying to get done, so that principal said, I really wanna work on this building, we'll try to work on this aspect. Kind of frame it from the proper practice out. So I feel like that was kind of one of the ideas of starting off with, what is it the board would like to see done this year? And that we can worry about a. Criterion three point one set dash seven.
Yeah.
And I think that the problem of practice may be very clarifying for us as a board, because my gut feeling is that. When we collectively read through, um. None of them are things that we feel like we wouldn't want to be working on, like, yeah, we, we wanna, we work on closing gaps. No, we wanna work on engaging our community, no, we wanna have positive culture with teachers, no, you know, I mean, so I almost think. Um, it would be helpful for us to think about it more through the lens of. What specifically do we wanna target, not that those other things aren't gonna be. Even just with good teaching, you don't not do all those other things, but you're focusing the evaluation on those others, and I think that may be. Part of the conversation that we might all be missing. Do you think that's?
I agree.
Okay, I agree. Cause obviously you can't evaluate them all eight.
No, we, we have something that we wanna see, so where do we want to deal, how do we wanna make it spread free?
Right, right, so that problem of practice, I think.
Eight, eight needles all at once.
Well, what, thanks.
That'd be crazy. Alright.
Perfect.
Anybody else, same thing?
No, I think that was really funny, I, actually, yeah.
Yeah. Cool. Right. Moving on to, do we have public comment? Right? Uh, no unfinished business, uh, new business. Discussion and approval of policy L eighteen eleven, Board Operating Principles first reading.
Well, I'll move for the, this, for the approval of policy eighteen eleven, Board Operating Principles first reading. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Uh, policy eighteen eleven, Board Operating Principles first reading, is there any discussion? Didn't really know, I, when I incorporated our comments, the one thing I will say at the end, I said, please refer to policy eighteen eleven P for communication procedures, which is. Coming.
Yes.
So, uh, which I did make the edits to eighteen eleven P for everybody to take a look at, I just haven't sent them out.
Okay.
So I just need to send them out to you guys and Chris and Candace to take a look at. And for everybody else to take a look at, make sure I addressed everything that we had comments on, there was a few question marks in there that I was like, well, how am I supposed to answer these exactly? So I went ahead and did the best I could and then formatting wise, um, I tried to break it up so that the page breaks were. So that nothing flowed to the next page. There was only like one section that didn't do that, that's for that eighteen eleven P, so just to know, that's coming.
Okay, I think this one has hang.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's, um, I, that's kind of our, that's not, uh, that's our formatting. The commitment to effective governance, let's move it to the next page.
Yeah. I thought. You're floating.
But that's just great, no, that's for that other document, the other document's big.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's multi-page, cause it's procedures, so. You remember the one we worked this, yes, okay.
And, and our signature. Piece that we talked about having is gonna be part of that.
Correct, along with that other matrix, which I haven't had time to create, there's, there's a lot in that document, so yeah, it's coming.
Okay, thank you for all of your work, yes, I appreciate, I know that. Taking everybody's, everything is a lot, so thank you.
I'm gonna go on the road for work, so I can get some work done. Alright, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed say nay, motion carries. Alright, approval of resolution five dash two, five, two, six, RCO grant agreement.
We approved this, um. This, uh, resolution. Uh, in, uh. July of twenty twenty four. Um, this modifying the July of twenty twenty four resolution authorizing. Uh, my, me, the superintendent to sign into an agreement with the RCO. On to, uh, kind of confirm the contract as part of a grant. That we are. That, so we can accept the grant to be awarded it begins with four, project as described in our grant application. So that's the change, is, is it's really just the number of items at the very, very end of the resolution. Which authorizes me to sign into the contract, um, as a representative.
Uh, I'll make an approval of resolution five dash two, five, two, six, RCO grant agreement. I'd love to second that.
It's been moved and seconded, approve resolution five dash two, five, two, six, RCO grant agreement, any discussion? Other than this is, um. Pretty awesome piece of information to get.
We're ninety-five percent of the way there, I'll celebrate when we close the last five percent. So.
It's getting closer. This was the biggest, biggest lift.
This, this was a lot of back and forth. And home conferences and calls and conversations with the Attorney General's Office and.
So it doesn't leave, maybe you can't answer this, but. What is the nature of the last five percent? It's okay.
Ink is dry.
Okay.
Yeah, we just gotta sign it, right, like that would be the five percent.
Okay.
Sign in the actual contract.
This will release our, our law firm from this, our law firm will submit a new legal opinion. That will need to be voted on by the Board of the RCO. The Board of the RCO will agree to that legal opinion and then release this contract you see as example D. That will fill in those yellow parts that are explicit to the application we submitted.
Right.
And then once we get that, so we will be dependent upon. Our legal counsel reaffirming the third legal opinion that we are able to accept state and federal money. The RCO having a, a board meeting. To approve it. And then releasing us the contract and us putting our, so we probably about, I don't know, it may only meet once a month. So if they already have their October meeting, it won't be till November. Um, so they beat their board meetings once a month. And then, I guess, so we're not speaking in riddles. Then once they have their board meeting, approve this, and it sounds like they're on track to approve. They will release the contract and we will be afforded one point two million dollars to get these athletic field stuff.
Just a lot of verbal, like.
But having, they get the paper for this agreement was in place, definitely raised my anxiety.
Well, I think. But soon, we should be able to put something from the district. Side of communication.
It is your call on how you want it to find done, do you wanna wait till the RCO votes and then we get the contract? That's when it would be officially, like, we're in place. Cause there could be a, they still have an elected board, or some board member might pipe up and say, I don't want to approve it randomly, even though the advice of the. Washington State Attorney General says I shouldn't sign it. I'm gonna vote now.
I really like it for sure, Gil.
That's where we're at, that's what, this is, this was a huge lift though, cause this opened the gate to a lot of verbal agreements, now we just need to get the ink agreement.
I, I find that. We can't always control the decisions of boards and some boards don't follow the advice of their lawyers, so since, uh, it still has to go to a board vote. Even though their lawyers are telling them, it's a state agency, I still can't remember what RCO, Department of Recreation or. Whatever, but it's a state agency, so they should be following the advice of the Attorney General's Office, cause that is their lawyer.
Thank.
But who knows when it comes to a vote? So I would. My preference would be, we have that contract, we've signed it, the ink is dry, cause we don't know what a board member will leave between here and there. But we do know the advice of their lawyers is to approve.
It's a recreation and conservation office.
My, my computer decided that it needed to reboot.
Alright, is there any further discussion? So it is, it is, it is. Good news, it's monumental news is really what it is, it's kind of what we've been. Working towards, we got some, looks like the doors are open, we just gotta. Start walking through, so, alright.
Looping like fifty percent.
Good.
I guess, I'm just thinking. At the community at large, it does know there's some good news coming, but I think there's a fair amount of confusion even as far as. What the parameters there are, I think even being able to communicate in some fashion. This isn't one point two, open to. Deciding what we want to do with that million dollars, this is one point two million dollars, or whatever the amount it is, it's already very much for a specified.
Yeah, and that's a key point, is this is one point two million dollars to increase youth athletic participation. Not youth athletic expectation.
Right.
And that point gets really confused, because if we filled out a grant, I mean, the grant was really, really clear. That the money needs to go for where a beater on the ground running around on, not for where people are sitting. And I do think that we, we could have written the grant up that way, but there was over a thousand applicants, so we, we would not have beat over a thousand applicants.
I'm not even sure we could have written it that way, because I'm pretty sure that the grant that we went after had a, uh, specific clause in there that said absolutely no. Grandstands, no stadium, it was all for youth athletic participation, yeah.
So I guess that, in the way of communication, maybe that gets out, needs to be clear, but I feel like that could be something people are.
Just don't want to go down the road, we got it, and then we don't have it.
Yeah, right, total wisdom written on it, I think, just knowing that that's. Probably what people are seeking clarity on.
I would love to give it. I am nervous on decisions of board members.
Yeah, you're, we trust your judgment.
Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, motion carries. Right. With that, good to the order.
Well. I mean, I don't wanna spill any thunder, last night's soccer game was good, the girls won narrowly.
They did, I'm glad we stuck around, that was good, that's a great goal.
It's a good goal and good game and, um, it was nice to have the youth night, all the.
Yeah, it was.
Girls soccer team.
It's great to see it. We had phenomenal weather.
Yes.
For youth night.
Michael was serenaded. By the soccer.
I, I was, yes, yeah, that was. Lots of fun. No, they, they, they decided to announce that it was my birthday. At the, the game, so, yeah. No, it was, it was a fun time, it was good to see everybody out, it was good to see, um, uh, all the. Young kids out, uh, if you haven't, I know, uh, Cindy took a lot of photos of it last night, also was able, she got the goal. On film too, so that was pretty cool. So yeah, check it out, check it out.
Uh, October third, we got to celebrate the grand opening of the. Will I say it correctly, that Elmer. Community and baby and service center. In essence, yes, um, beautiful facility and I think it's a great win for our community at large, so.
Yeah, really nice, if you haven't had a chance, stop over and look at it, it's. Nice looking building, yeah.
Looks like we're currently in the process of completing the solar project, the rest of that.
I think so, I think we're getting the solar project done.
I saw him on the roof the other day, so I figured that's what they were doing. Awesome, yeah, I saw the brackets and stuff and exciting. That's good.
My good to the order is gonna just get the RCO grant, I'm gonna, it's all applying a lot of brand base from here now.
I, I think.
I mean, it is a little, it is a little surreal, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, if. People are seeking information about it, that it is. People are seeking information about it, that it is, there, the whole application is. Out there. So um through the RCO. But. Just don't wanna get the cart ahead of the horse here in case. It doesn't work out, so, well, yes, we. Are technically awarded it, we have not. Signed anything yet, so.
Anything else?
No, just, I am excited about that, you got me excited again.
Good, you should be, it's your birthday.
It is. Anything else, you make anything? All right, that's.
I'll make a motion. Rejoin the meeting, a second.
Spend moving a second during the meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, all those opposed say nay, motion carries, meeting adjourned.